Okay, let me call the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order if you could please. Those with cell phones, if you're turnable or beautiful, appreciate it. And Commissioner Warren will be giving our invocation and we'll do as you believe.
Most merciful and gracious Father, we gather together in this proceeding to deliberate the affairs of men, women, children, families, taxpayers, businesses, students, employers, laborers, the unemployed, some who have served in uniform, and some who provide local government services, many who are suffering from a still languishing economy, and those among us who have labored many long years to secure a few years of well-earned rest. We seven county commissioners implore your divine presence and your inspiration this evening as we make decisions that affect the lives of these many people we represent. Help us to be sensitive tonight to the socio-economic needs of our community, the fiscal constraints under which we must operate, and the biblical precepts you have provided us to guide us in managing the affairs of mankind. We seek to honor you in all that we do and to likewise honor the Holy Spirit and your Son, in whose most holy and precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good to see all of you here tonight. Looks like they've got a packed house. Thank you for coming. Do we, we have one additional agenda item and it's a resolution that we will put at Item B under New Business. And other than that, do we have any additional agenda items? If not, I need a motion.
I move to approve.
Approved, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Yes. Okay, approval of consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda as proposed.
Okay. Yes.
Could I pull out D? I had a couple of questions. Item D.
I amend my motion.
All right, you've heard the motion and amended. All those in favor say aye.
I'd like to make a discussion. I was hoping to have an opportunity to discuss real quickly. I had the opportunity presenting Lieutenant Colonel Sherri Womack her, the resolution that we presented at her retirement. It was a great honor and I thank you very much.
Thank you for being there because I absolutely would put a date and couldn't make it so. She served with great distinction, so I'm glad that you could do that. Okay, all those in favor of amended approval of consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Proposed? You have a... Okay, there's no public comment, so we'll go directly into Old Business. Community Transportation Grant Program, this is that you dated to place.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I bring before you this evening two grant applications to approve for the County of Lee Transit System. The first one is our FY 2016 Community Transportation Program Grant in Administrative and Employee Development. We are asking for $157,558 with a 15% local match of $23,635. This covers the cost of 85% salaries of our County of Lee Transit System Coordinator and a percentage of the administrative cost of three other staff members, benefits travel, general office supplies, space rental, technology supplies, and other indirect costs. It also includes 85% reimbursement for the vehicle insurance on 18 vehicles. Then in our capital request, we are asking for one hot-top 12-passenger vehicle at a cost of $51,500. This will replace one vehicle that is in excess of 115,000 miles now. The lettering for this vehicle, and we're asking for $5,400 in furniture for the new Colts facility here on Hillcrest, as well as some additional building security equipment and van parking lot surveillance equipment to the cost of $20,320. The total of our capital request is $77,440, 10% local match for that, $7,744.
I move to approve. Okay, we have a motion to approve, if there are any discussion. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
The second grant is our Section 5310 Elderly Disabled Federal Grant Application. And this is what we are using that provides 50% of the cost to operate what we call the Dash Route, which is our circular deviated fixed route that helps individuals, they don't have to call in before, they can get on and off at the designated stops for $2 each way. The total we are requesting is $44,185. That covers the cost of two part-time drivers and 25% of one of the administrative salaries. And the vehicle, one vehicle is included in this and it's the operation expenses for one year. And the local match is $22,092, but we cover this with our other contract revenue for the passengers we pick up at the same time we're picking them up at the designated stops. Most of it is the Elderly Disabled Transportation Assistance Program and the General Public Grant you approved a couple of weeks ago. The other is the Senior Services Grant because we stop at the senior housing complexes and bring them to the enrichment centers. So we use the funding through Senior Services for the match, so we don't ask the commissioners or the county to pay that $22,000 match. We try to flat rate it.
Okay, any questions for that? Move to approve. Is there a motion to approve, any discussion?
I had one question.
Yes.
And this actually extends back to the other grant request as well. We heard, I've heard some feedback from some of the drivers. I was just curious, what's the average hourly rate for our drivers?
$7.75.
Okay, and how does that compare to the counties around us?
We are in line, maybe a little less, but we are attempting to generate that revenue through contract revenue of what we charge our contractors, and they are already struggling to pay because of the time of private nonprofits. And unfortunately, except for the road grant that got cut, that is the only grant funding we have that will supplement the driver's salaries. I can do a study of Harnett and let you know. One thing that we do not do that other counties do is when our vehicles are stopped for more than 15 minutes, we don't pull the drivers off the clock.
Right.
Some of the other systems, if they are stopped for more than dead time, in other words, that's what it's called, then they pull them off the clock. They aren't paid for that.
I would agree with that policy. I don't think that that's appropriate to pull them off the clock like that, but I guess...
I don't think so. Lots of times it's because of cancellation.
Yeah. But I do, so as far as you're aware, we are generally in line with the counties around us?
Around that.
All right.
I know, I think Chatham may be a little more, but again, they pull theirs off. We're comparable to Moore, they may start at eight. I need to check Harnett.
Yeah.
Their system has changed a lot in the last year or so, and I'm not sure what they're paying now.
I'm not really interested in you doing an exhaustive study, but it would be nice just to have a dipstick check of what Harnett and Moore are paying.
I'll check it.
Just out of curiosity. And we're not having a difficulty filling those slots, are we?
Sometimes, yes. We've been very fortunate. A lot of our drivers are already retired from another job, so this is not their primary income. We've recently hired three or four though, and we lost a really good candidate recently to the school system, who we only kept him one day and he got another job.
That would be an indicator, I guess, if we're really getting that far below the going rate for drivers, if we're having a hard time filling those slots, but okay.
We're very fortunate with the drivers we have. They do a good job.
Okay.
While you're doing that study with Harnett and Moore, make sure that we understand what their policies are about drivers.
Correct. See it, I'll refer that over and have him check with his counterparts in the other county, the coordinators in the other county, and get that for you.
Any other questions for David? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, next order of business, renewal lease agreement and EMS service agreement between Lee County and Central Carolina Hospital. Mr. Parks, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. If the board remembers back on October 6th, 2014, the board approved a two-month extension on the current agreement to give both our parties time to negotiate the terms of the addendum and the renewal. The lease agreement is, there are some changes there, mainly if you look on page 69, we're going from a five-year lease to a seven-year lease. The EMS contract also goes from five years to seven years. That was a request from a hospital, they just wanted the longer term so that they could make more long-range planning decisions. And that was the big change in the lease. There was also some other wording changes that the attorneys went back and forth on, namely about the use of the building, what they could use the building for, what they couldn't use it for, that type of thing. So I'm sure Ms. Schmidt would be happy to answer any of those questions you have on that. And then there really isn't a lot of changes to the EMS contract itself, the services that they're providing us. The attorneys agreed to just use a short letter of renewal that would be essentially a one-page addendum extending the contract for the seven years. There is a CPI increase for the first year, and then they maintain that cost for the remaining term of the seven years without any increases. So that is one thing that during the life of the contract, they have not asked us for lots of price increases or anything. Be happy to answer any questions. Jonathan Kelly's here representing Central Carolina Hospital.
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions.
I move to approve, and then we'll go into the discussion.
Yes, I'm pulling up the Evergreen Solutions Audit on the emergency services and it, they had a finding that said three ambulances providing 24/7 coverage. Mr. Kelly. And the recommendation here was that we were to maintain an objective statistical information to determine the minimum mandatory ambulance staffing needs required by the county, workload trends, patterns, peak workload time periods, impact of frequent flyers, high-volume patients, and the employment of a system status management program. Have we put any of that in operation?
I'm not sure what you're referencing.
Okay.
I'm not sure they were given a copy of the audit.
Okay. All right. The three ambulances, how many do we have?
We have three 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And then we have a prime time ambulance that runs Monday through Friday from 9:30 to 6:00.
So it's four total?
Yes.
Okay.
That's it, that's it.
I have just a couple of quick questions. With the seven-year lease, hopefully everything stays the same and there's no problems, but you know, but the hospital will be in private if it were sold. Would it be similar to what we talked about? Um, certainly, and I apologize, I may have missed it going through.
Assignment is on page 72 of the contract.
Okay.
So if...
The default?
Under assignment, landlord shall not unreasonably withhold, delay, or condition its consent to an assigned or sublease provided that tenant may, with the consent or approval of landlord, assign its interest in the lease to an affiliate of tenant. So you know, basically, if they were to sell the hospital, you know, obviously we would want to review who they were selling it, selling it to, but we would not, you know, unreasonably not review those folks and then agree to allow them to assume the lease.
Right, but I guess my question was, I couldn't find specifically in here, you know, if they sell it and we're going through the back and forth with the new owner, who does the ambulance service in between?
Well, hopefully that would be taken care of before they close.
Before they close.
As they're going through due diligence, hopefully we would be part of that due diligence before they, before they closed on the sale of the hospital. But they would still continue, they still have a contract to provide us those services for the seven years, and sale of the hospital would not allow them to basically get out of the contract.
They didn't renege on it.
They didn't have to assign their interest.
Okay. Okay, I mean, that was just my question, was I, you know, if we had some issues with the new owner of the hospital, I'm just...
If we had any issues, we would probably sue the old owner.
Just a question. I just didn't want our coverage to be in jeopardy or anything. Seven years is a long time. No.
It can be, but it's also for them, as they're trying to make investments in what they're doing. And there has been some discussion about, you know, increases in services they would like to do.
Right.
Giving them the longer term gives them that ability to go back and talk to their shareholders and their board and find out what they can do to improve services.
Any other questions?
I just got one. Would you like to have a copy of this Evergreen section?
I would. Yes, sir.
I'll get it. I'll forward you the whole study.
I'm sorry.
That'd be the easiest thing to do. I have it in PDF.
Okay.
I'll get it.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor to accept, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you very much.
Your memorandum of understanding for FY 2014 Homeland Security Grant Program.
I'm sorry. I'm a sick child, I didn't have a chance to call you, to ask you before tonight. I just wanted a little bit more specifics, you know, as far as the type of training activities. You know, if we're taking, my understanding, we're taking county money that the grant has given us and putting it back. So I'm assuming more money from different counties put together can give you better training opportunities.
The money is divided up by differs when we're differ six, when a differ is domestic preparedness region. And the concept is they can do more by pooling the money.
Right.
And a prime example is a $12,000 grant that y'all had approved for us to have the exercise we're looking at doing in May. So that's the example of it. So yes, we're giving back $27,000, we're letting them, giving them authorization to provide training with that $27,000, but then we, in turn, we rub the request for that grant, so $12,000 should come back to the county just for that. But another thing, Gaynell's been a trainer with me, PIO, Public Information Officer Training. They covered the expenses of going to the class, your motel rooms, your meals, instructors, and it keeps the county having to foot the bill for that.
And this goes through February 28th, 2016?
Yes, ma'am.
If something were to come up where you feel like you need additional training, you're thinking about the fracking issues, you know, if something were to come up, you know, within that time, can we get any of that money back?
Yes, ma'am. We'll just put in for a grant, which is like for exercise for the recovery, exercise, same thing.
That was my question. I just, sorry to...
That's no problem. That's no problem at all.
That PIO training is specifically for your area of expertise?
That PIO training could be for Gaynell, that could be for the Health Department, anybody that I designate as a person under our Mercy Operations Center in the county. So if they're in our Mercy Operations Plan, you could go to it.
Yeah, well, it only covers what you're doing.
Yes, sir.
Right.
But it is a generic Public Information Officer's class.
Okay.
Would not say, would not say it.
So any further questions for Shane? Since we pulled that off, the consent agenda, I think we need a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Shane. Okay, the next one is, note, the registrar of deed retirement, Miss Molly McGinnis. She gets retired. Molly, I'm gonna, I guess I'm gonna go down. Okay, thank you first of all for your service, and it's been long and very hard, and we appreciate you. This is the Lee County Board of Commissioners Resolution honoring Registrar of Deed, Molly McGinnis. Whereas Molly McGinnis was hired on June 27th, 1977 as Lee County Deputy Registor of Deeds, and whereas, as McGinnis was promoted to Assistant Registor of Deed on August 1st, 1987, and whereas in February 1990, Miss McGinnis achieved the designation of Certified Assistant Registor of Deeds by the North Carolina Association of Registor of Deeds, and whereas on December 6th, 2004, Miss McGinnis was elected by the voters of Lee County as Registor of Deeds, and was re-elected in November 2008, and again in November 2012. And whereas, Miss McGinnis will retire from Lee County Government effective December 1st, 2014, as Lee County Registor of Deeds with 37 years of service. And whereas, it is a desire of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to recognize the achievements of Miss McGinnis and to express its appreciation for her dedicated service and significant contributions to Lee County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners for Lee County, North Carolina, that it congratulates Miss Molly McGinnis for her career in public service, which has been characterized by a genuine interest in and concerns for Lee County, and it wishes her continued success in all of her future endeavors, adopted and presented this third day of November 2014.
Miss Molly, we want to, before you all leave, we want to thank all of the family for coming, sharing in this retirement celebration. So we thank all of you for coming. All the Plank Road, Plank Road and 42.
All the lights are gonna go back.
Thanks for the water down there.
We finally have that water.
We're out to hurry.
Gaynell, make sure you enter into the record. We got one thing.
One thing.
It's on the record.
Okay, the next is the Resolution for Ken Armstrong. And Mr. Fisher Reeves, would you do that for us, please?
Yes, sir. I think all of you either know personally or know of Ken Armstrong, who has been selected as a new Executive Director in Florida. And I don't know, and I've seen anyone come in from out of state and do any more for people in need of housing than Ken Armstrong. He will be dearly missed in this community. The people that live in his units may find themselves in a different, different situation. This man would make sure that anything that he was doing that would benefit public housing he was a part of, and had been that way for a long time. So I'll go on and read this Lee County Board of Commissioners Resolution honoring Ken D. Armstrong. Whereas Ken D. Armstrong is a native of Daytona Beach, Florida, and whereas Ken Armstrong took the position of Executive Director of the Sanford Housing Authority in October 2002, and whereas Ken Armstrong moved to Sanford, North Carolina from Florida, where he was employed for 19 years with the Omon, Armon Beach Housing Authority, 10 years of which he served as the Executive Director. And whereas Ken Armstrong oversees all management and operations for the Sanford Housing Authority, which provides safe and affordable housing to all eligible persons and provides residents with assistance and becoming self-sufficient and first-time homeowners. And whereas Ken Armstrong has been instrumental in modernizing 450 Housing Authority units and the building of an additional 110 units, along with implementing the home ownership program. And whereas Ken Armstrong actively helped recruit a Boys and Girls Club facility next to one of the Section 8 housing sites. And whereas Ken Armstrong is married and the father of two daughters, and whereas Ken Armstrong and his wife will be moving to Gainesville, Florida in mid-November, where he'll be taking the position of Executive Director for the, I think it's Alachua County Housing Authority. Let me spell that if I got it wrong. Whereas Ken Armstrong, years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the City of Sanford, County of Lee, and all those he has come into contact with. And whereas Ken Armstrong has earned the admiration and high regard for those with whom he came into contact and the effecting of his fellow staff, who were proud to consider him part of the team. Now therefore, be it resolved that Lee County Board of Commissioners does hereby wish to express its sincere appreciation and thanks to the accomplishment of Ken Armstrong, probably should be Ken D. Armstrong, and his service to Sanford and Lee County, adopted this third day of November 2014. Sponsored by Professor Reeves, Chairman Parks.
Okay, thank you, Professor Reeves. Do I have a motion to accept?
移到
Okay, any questions, discussions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next one.
Let me just, let me just say this, I missed an opportunity here, and I do want to make a comment. Having served with Ken on a couple of different boards, I would, I would like to say that I would echo the comments that are in the resolution and add to that, that not only will he be missed, he may, he was, he was an institution in this community in just a few years. Ken Armstrong was, was actually an inspiration to a lot of other folks to get involved in volunteer activities in this community. And he worked closely with a number of us on homeless boards and on food charities and other things. There's a lot of things that aren't in that resolution that Ken did in the community as if he had been born and raised here all his life. He was an institution in this community, and it was a shock to a lot of us when he accepted that job and moved away. I think all of us assumed he would be here forever. I hope, I hope that vacuum is gonna be filled quickly because his testimony is...
It's with family, that's why I'm sure...
Well, it is, and I'm a, I mean, he, I'm glad that he's moving on, I'm sure it's gonna be good for him and his family. I will say this, that he was the main reason why I was confident the Wilbrook Hotel needed to be transitioned over and why it's gonna be preserved as a landmark for downtown Sanford. And it is, it was his vision, him and Bill Wilson, I think, that it's gonna make a difference in having downtown Sanford preserved around that institution. So, but Ken, Ken has been a real institution and a major, you know, and a major inspiration for me in doing a lot of the volunteer work that I do around Sanford, Lee County, and he's gonna be sorely missed. And I just hope that someone else will step up and fill that vacuum he's gonna leave.
You know, one other comment. I will tell you, in the years I've known him, he's one of the few administrators that will tell you, if he says, "I'm gonna do this," it got done. There was no hustle and bustle. He always seemed to know what the requirements would be, what the authority, what authority he had, and he'd see to it that it got done. And you don't find that very often. We already got a motion.
Yes, sir. We were, we were... Okay. We just, additional comments, so move on to bid for radio console for backup public safety, answer point, Mr. Shane.
Mr. Shane Seabrooks.
I feel bad, the audience left. Um, good evening once again. We have a proposal, um, to complete the radio system and the backup, um, PSAP. It's located in our building, the proposal's from forty-four thousand, one thirty-four eleven. Uh, just to give a little bit of background about what we did before we get any further with this. Um, we've priced this multiple different ways. Motorola actually came in and, um, gave us a proposal in November of two thousand and twelve. And to be able to put in four positions, which is four consoles, in our backup center was one sixty-seven, um, to do that. Uh, I met with Motorola this morning for two hours and, uh, we discussed the, um, the good and the bad of buying a used system to go in there and, um, of course they would like our business. Uh, and they will have our business as we move forward. Um, the same system now, two years later, is one hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Uh, that's just a rough quote for it. So when you say one eighty-three, that's a lot, um, a lot for us. The other thing is that doesn't include any antennas, any cable, any radios. So we still have to buy ten radios, we still have to put antennas on top of it on the cable and so, you know, it goes up very quickly. Um, the one thing I did like this morning, even though Motorola no longer supports, when I say supports, they don't manufacture this console anymore. But it's, it's what they have at the City of Sanford. They still have technicians that will service this equipment and they still have parts, equipment, computers, boards, whatever we need to meet the needs if we were to have any problems with this. Um, another win-win for this, um, with using the, uh, the used Motorola equipment. Not only can we cover those four positions in there, but it will also cover the other two positions that the Sheriff's Department uses. So the difference in that is at the present time, they have a desktop radio with a desktop mic. One radio. They have one radio for SRO in there. When we put this system in, it gives them complete one hundred percent interoperability with the county. They can talk to the fire departments, they can talk to the detectives' channel, they can talk to the Sanford Police Department without having to physically turn a knob on the radio. The dispatcher will be able to touch the screens, uh, we utilize touchscreen, um, monitors in there. They'll be able to pull the channel up and talk to whoever they need to talk to. So, um, we met with Pat Garner with the City of Sanford. Wanted to buy in from Pat, you know, what is your thoughts on this? Because initially we were looking at putting Intel Access, which would, that's what we have in our mobile command post. The, the problem with using the Telx system, um, one of the things that nine-one-one board requests is you have a seamless approach to that transition. Should we have to cut the system off at the city and switch them over? Should we have a failure? It wouldn't look the same if we went with Telx. By using this system, it's going to be the identical same icon, and it's going to be the same computer system, same radios. They leave City Hall, they get to our building and ten minutes later they're operational. So it gives us that seamless approach and it still allows for us to not only move them into our building should something happen, but it allows us to operate both centers at the same time. So if we had another major disaster such as the tornadoes, we could have eight dispatchers working at the same time plus our two from the Sheriff's Department in there. So, uh, we felt like this was the way to go, it's much more affordable and, uh, they'll provide training for us. This is coming from a company, Sunny Communications, they've been in business for over fourteen years. Uh, I've looked them up, I've done all the research I can, I found one complaint on them and it was over a twenty-dollar shipping charge on a piece of equipment for a lapel mic. So if you've been in business that long and your reps that good on the internet of all places, you've not had any problems there. And I feel like they're going to stand behind this product and I feel like this is the, uh, this is the right move for us. Yes, sir.
Did I understand you correctly in saying that this radio console interface is a mirror of what the city has?
Yes, sir, it, it is one step above, they have a MC fifty-five hundred and this is the, um...
It's a Motorola product.
It's a Motorola product.
Right, and it's, but it, but it is, but it is to a degree antiquated. In other words, it's not, it's not the latest models in service and therefore what you were saying is Motorola says it isn't one that they currently, uh, maintain under warranty.
That's wrong, that is correct, yes, sir.
And, and not, it's not necessarily bad, they do have technicians that can still service.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Now, what's the likelihood or what is, better, better question, what is the risk that, and, and this is not a risk of a, of a, of a, of an incident, but what's the risk that we could have a system bug that could occur that would render both the primary and the backup PSAP, um, vulnerable because of these antiquated systems? You know, you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Not, not, not an incident risk, but, but a risk of a system failure.
Uh, what do you think about these systems? Um, they're not IP-based systems. So you have a server in the back room, the radio's in a, in a rack, and they go to a punch block. So you still have a phone interconnect between them. They're standalone systems, so if you lost something in the Sheriff's Department, it's not going to shut down what's going on, the police department and vice versa.
So you don't think you're software vulnerable?
No, sir, no, sir. This goes back to the point when people can still work on stuff. Well, they have a, have a computer technician.
I'm just worried about single point of failure and having a system vulnerability that where the primary would go down and the backup would go down because of a single point of failure with software and, and because we're using antiquated equipment, that both of them would go down and we couldn't bring either one of them back up.
Both systems are standalone, the radio piece, um, all of the, the stuff that's interconnected that mirrors each other is the CAD stuff, all that's new and warranted by CenturyLink.
Okay.
And then we do have a redundant backup. I mean, if we were to lose both centers, then we'd drop back our mobile command post and have that communications piece in there and phone piece.
So you thought through the...
I think I've got some great hairs that, this has been three years in the making.
Well, the other, I guess the other question I would throw at you is, you know, just in, in risk assessment, um, you know, you can't, you can't foresee every possible scenario, but in risk assessment, the, uh, you're going to, you're going to want to timestamp this equipment. This isn't something that you're going to hang your hat on for more than a few years.
Um, speaking with the city, uh, talking with Pat Garner, they're looking at starting that process in about three years for that next rotation of equipment, so that's something we can budget for, that's something we can plan for. And when they upgrade their center, I think it would be all in our best interest to upgrade at the same time.
So this capital investment, you know, we need to be honest with each other here. This is not something we're investing in for a long haul. This is something that we're doing...
This is three, four, five years max.
And we need to, we need to, we need to tag this thing right now as saying this is a three-year investment or a four-year investment, and that's what it is. When I spend a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for a brand-new off-the-shelf product that's going to be maintained for five to ten years, this is a three-year product or a four-year product and it's obsolescent. It's actually obsolescent now.
That's right.
But we're going to make it work because of, we're being frugal. So I mean, that's, we, and that'll be in the record when we approve this. This is not a long, long-term capital improvements of the Board of Commissioners. Four years from now, does it come back and say, "Why did we waste money on this thing?" You know, it's a short-term investment. As I understand it, it parallels what the city has?
Yes, sir. So when that telecommunicator leaves the city and walks over and sits down on the console in our building, it's a mirror image for the radio console.
Now this is, this is also paid for out of, uh, out of the monies that are appropriate for, for PSAP, right?
This is not part of the... This is not PSAP money.
This is coming out of, out of...
This is county money here.
County money.
Yes, sir.
Maybe I have a question.
I was going to say the forty-four thousand, that's a little bit less than the, the cost of the other...
Yes, sir.
Other, uh, companies. Um, I read my question would be, could you negotiate them down any more than the forty-four thousand?
I'm worried we're trapped there.
Okay.
Uh, I think Mr. Crumpson will tell you that I will in deal on stuff that we buy for the county.
And the reason, you know, I was just wondering, since it is obsolete and we're going to, we have people to work on it, I was just wondering if they could, uh, give some more break or some more...
Speaking with the Motorola rep today, that is the going rate for this equipment, they've got it on their shelves as well. So if we had a failure, I mean, we've got this popular equipment, we could either order more from this company or we could go to Federal and get it from Marazan.
Okay, alright.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Well, okay, so if you need to fix this equipment, it's going to cost us out of pocket to fix it because there's no warranty, correct?
There's a three-month warranty on this versus a three-year warranty if you're buying a brand-new equipment, yes, sir.
So have we budgeted for anticipated repairs?
We will on the upcoming budget. We have money in our budget for maintenance, but this whole backup PSAP, this has kind of been a whirlwind of a ride, it'd be the easiest way to put this over the last two years, but, yes, sir. And I think that's something that we need to start looking at now as far as moving forward with updates.
But now backup PSAP money, don't you have funding for backup PSAP maintenance?
For certain items. Um, not everything in the PSAP is covered by the nine-one-one funds. So radios are one of those issues that are not covered. You remember the nine-one-one funds are really, um, around the telephone system. You know, as, as it was explained to me, so, you know, anything that, that has anything to do with a telephone in there or the lines or...
The furniture, the chargers, the dispatchers. But it stops, the fun, the...
Stops as soon as that dispatcher moves from answering the telephone to dispatching. Nine-one-one is not, money is not dispatching.
And as you can imagine, there's a lot, and Mr. Crumpson sees this, it's a lot of counties lobbying for them to let it carry on to the point it leaves the antenna at the repeater side because that would cover all this equipment.
Is this, is this something we need to do with the legislative rights?
It's in a legis, it is, it is a legislative goals for the association, it has been for eight years.
Yes.
I, Shane, I, I mean, I, you know, I, I look at the bids and it lists this equipment. I know Jim probably would, I get confused, it all looks like numbers and letters to leave with the different kinds of radios and stuff. But, but, you know, there was such a disparity in the bids that you got once you took the labor cost out.
Yes.
Was that because your, the others were new equipment?
New, when, when three-year warranty gets paid.
That was, okay, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, for, kind of going along with what Jim said, you know, for people watching and listening, you know, to do this and get new equipment, we're looking at ninety-one thousand, ninety thousand versus forty-four thousand.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
So that is a big difference. And maybe the last...
We're going to take care of it.
I've got a sidebar question.
Yes, sir.
Can you finish?
No, that's fine, that, I just wanted to clear it up.
I certainly, like what I've heard thus far, will this have any impact on how we communicate with the highway patrol?
It's actually going to make us better off. Because one of the options, if you look through there, we are putting two Viper radios in the console. So literally our dispatcher, this works good for us too. Because our Sheriff's Department dispatcher can now switch right over to our highway patrol channel from Lee County and talk to them, where now they cannot do that.
Right now they're using what, we've all had radios in...
They've got radios, um, but highway patrol has switched over completely to Viper. Yes, sir. And with this console, they'll have the capability to actually talk on two Viper channels at the same time.
Alright.
Yes, sir.
That's great, thank you.
Okay, we got a motion to approve, any further discussion or questions?
I just would like to say, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate, um, Shane being frugal and not coming in here with a...
It's not easy sometimes.
Yeah, I know. I think it's, it's smart, it's smart money to do this in the early stages of the backup PSAP and then, and then we just, we just, when we've got, when we can afford to buy a first-class system, we'll do it in a few years. That's good.
Thank you.
Okay, are, are we okay with our president?
Yes, sir, he has the funds in his budget, yes, sir.
Alright, if no other questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, application for lottery funds for Lee County Board of Education, Mr. Lee.
Good evening, before you, is the joint application between, um, for lottery funds that's been requested by the school board to, for your approval. Um, last year we requested seven hundred thousand, eighty-four thousand of that was for planning of the, um, project and six hundred and sixteen thousand was to, for start of the project. Both pieces of that have finally been approved based on funding that had come in. So now they are requesting an additional five hundred and eighty-four thousand this year to get them enough money to complete the project. So they are asking that we approve this application. If you look on page ninety-three of your package, you will see that we are anticipating getting six hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars in lottery funds this year. So we should receive enough to cover this request during the year.
We verified that. You said we anticipate and we verified that, that's coming in?
We don't know because we get quarterly allocations based on lottery sales.
Lottery sales are good.
But I can't verify until it comes in.
Yes.
Okay, but, but the state's already made a determination on percentage that the county's getting?
Yeah, they've already based on their distribution formula given us an estimate based on what they anticipate lottery sales being.
No, they can't, I, I think maybe you're concerned that they're going to go forward with the project, the funds don't come in and they're hanging out there, they're hanging us out there, that can't happen.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good, alright.
I think I understood where you were going.
Right, we, the state won't approve it until we have the funds in our pot. And I won't let them start the project, you know, they can't get money from me that I don't have.
Okay, any other questions?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
We've got a motion to approve, no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? You can ask, and you can go ahead with the next one.
Next you have a budget amendment on page ninety-six, it's our fifth budget amendment for this fiscal year. Um, part of this budget amendment is to appropriate additional revenues for adult daycare, crisis intervention and family reunification programs that social services has been allocated. Then you also see an appropriation from fund balance, the forty-seven, excuse me, uh, forty-seven thousand nine hundred from fund balance is for IT. The remaining of that fund balance appropriation is to do our match for the adult daycare program. The forty-seven thousand nine hundred is to do a surveillance camera system here at the government center.
Now I read, Mr. Chairman, I read that breakdown in here, is that going to be presented or briefed at all?
For the surveillance system, that is the next item on the agenda.
I get to, I get to do that since Kyle said, is that leadership training tonight and the rest of the week.
Okay. Any, any other questions?
Are we going to try, are we going to prove the funding and then, and then give the presentation?
I apologize, I think when Gaynale did the agenda, she tries to group me and then John and says, "John's doing that one."
I don't have any, I don't have any real objections, but I do want to ask some questions about the surveillance camera system, so.
Move to approve and then you can do, ask the questions.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, I've, I've asked Kyle to be looking at security systems for some time for this building. Um, especially with the move of Colts over here and the number of vehicles that are here at night. Um, we felt it was imperative that we get surveillance, uh, not only outside but inside the building. So Kyle had been reviewing, uh, companies and, and options for quite a while. Uh, we talked with Fayetteville about what they were doing, uh, tried to piggyback on some of the things that they were doing, but it wouldn't work here, so Kyle spent a lot of time talking with vendors about, uh, what to do here at the government center. He has recommended using Security one oh one, uh, for, for this project. Mainly because this is a, uh, we'll be putting in a hard line out into the parking lot for this and not trying to use wireless, which, you know, inherently you can have problems with wireless. Uh, we need to have a dedicated line and this system will hold that dedicated line. Um, on page one oh five, you have the areas that we're looking to use surveillance for outside the building. As you can see, it's a pretty big area. We have a lot of employees that are concerned about parking up in the C-eleven area, that's the area up in mental health. And without actually putting somebody up there, the best thing for us is to have a camera up there and as much lighting as we can have, so, um, I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can.
On, on one oh four, are the arrows indicating where the cameras are standing?
Not necessarily.
See, that's what I'm getting figured out.
No, it's, it's actually showing you where the cameras, the covered area that the...
Where it's going to be committed.
Right.
Okay, good.
If you, uh, we'll have one camera up, you see the blue, the kind of the lightish blue line that goes up to right to the bottom of the one on the C-eleven. There's a little...
She's on, she's on, she's on the floor plan.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's...
Um, actually there's, um, the cameras inside are going to be in the waiting areas for DSS and we'll probably end up putting them in Health Department and Tax as well. And those areas where, you know, we greet the public, which is where we've had our issues.
Well, the arrows indicate like travel directions, will it look like?
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
Yeah, that's more travel directions, yes, ma'am.
So the, the cameras aren't on here, on, on one oh four at all?
No, it's really going to be, um, in, if you, anywhere where you see reception,
Mm-hmm.
um, that's really where those cameras are supposed to be located. That's where we've had our problems inside the buildings.
Like C-seven, six, C-six and those, those are cameras?
That, that's the cameras?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the arrows are the direction they'll be monitoring?
That's correct, and you see we, we'll be monitoring hallways too.
No, the, if I may, I'm, I'm Al Affenito, I'm with Security one oh one, I am Security.
Al, you need to come up to the mic.
Good, I'm glad you introduced yourself, I have some questions.
The arrows are, represent your emergency evacuation routes.
Right.
They don't represent the cameras. Generally speaking, the cameras... Generally speaking, the cameras would be pushed back into a corner where they'll give you approximately an eighty-five degree field of view. These are all megapixel, high-resolution video cameras, if you get within forty feet of these cameras, you'll be able to identify anybody who's standing there. In your parking lots, you're gonna have, uh, cameras under a single dome, there'll be four cameras under each dome, and they give you a complete one hundred and eighty degree field of view, just like this. And they're five megapixel, if you get within sixty or seventy feet of those cameras, you'll have identification grade video of those individuals.
Okay, so I have a question, a couple of questions about those cameras, okay, so are they motion activated or are they going continuous?
They will do either. I would recommend that you record in a motion detection mode, I would also recommend, for instance, that we blank out your streets, so you're not watching cars drive by all day.
Right.
You're just wasting your storage space, but we can do all of that stuff.
Alright, so they can be set, like some parking lots where we want, where we, we wanna, where we don't want continuous, we can just go motion activated, other ones where we may, uh. We may set them where we want them, where we want it continuous, because there's, there's, there's only so much, there's, there's pilferage going on or whatever.
Correct.
Okay, so then, um, is there, what kind of, of zoom, cause some of these things are, are, you know, two hundred meters across. So what kind of zoom capacity do you have here, you say five megapixel, I understand that at close range, that's great, but, you know, zoom capacity.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm interested in knowing, you know.
I just saw this before the, so it's pretty cool.
Alright, can you get it?
That's a five megapixel camera coming from Vancouver, British Columbia, over my phone, live here.
Alright.
Okay, that's right now.
How, what distance was that taken?
Let me show you.
Notice it's not dark yet.
Alright.
That's what that camera's watching, in its hotel.
Right now. Mm-hmm.
Alright.
What's that, what's that distance?
I would put that at about two hundred feet out to that van.
Alright.
So certainly bigger than your parking lot.
So just remember, John, you can sit at home and watch the building.
And you're going to have. You're gonna have twelve of those cameras in that parking lot area.
So you're saying you could get a positive facial identification from a distance of a hundred meters to.
Well, not a hundred meters, I would put it at about ninety feet.
You don't think so?
They recognize, uh, pixels per square foot as identification purposes, and if you can get forty pixels per square foot, you have identification, identification grade video of people.
So you're saying only up to, that's only good for about ninety feet?
I'm gonna be able to identify you out to ninety feet, at a hundred and eighty feet, I'm gonna be able to tell you that it's a white male wearing a black, uh, black coat.
Alright.
Red tie, you're gonna have that kind of a video. Now, the other thing you'll find is that these people that are doing these things, they're not unknown to the police. I may be able to show this video to the officers and they would say, you know what, I know who that guy is, whether they can identify him or not.
Yeah, but see, I would, okay, so going back to this, back, if, if I might interject this.
Sure.
On these diagrams here, some of these cameras, and I'm not sure what the population of cameras is gonna be here, but on C four, C five, that's only gonna give you facial identification out to about, about. At most halfway across that parking lot. The other half that parking lot, you know.
That would be correct, yes.
You're only, you're only gonna get a halfway across, after that, at best you're gonna be able to determine, um, you know, whether they're, uh, you know, about approximate height and maybe the race of the individual, that's all you're gonna know.
Correct, that's correct.
And, and that's, if they're wearing a hoodie, you're not gonna tell that even.
That's correct.
So, I mean, if that's what you're after, you're gonna know the approximate time of day that the incident occurred.
Well, and we have had incidents in the parking lot, we didn't know, I mean, broad daylight. Um, you know, we had an incident, and we had two or three folks lose their catalytic converters out from underneath their car during work hours. So, you know, if these people then drive away, if they're, you know, if they're not on foot, we, at least we have a chance, right now, we don't have a chance.
At what distance, at what distance can you, can you read a license plate off those cameras?
A lot of that will depend on the angle of the vehicle as it pertains to the camera itself. Um, you would probably be able to read license plates to about sixty or seventy feet. Um, now, when you factor that these cameras will be on that center light post out there. The vehicles that are in the main parking lot, most of those vehicles, you would probably be able to read plates on.
So if, if a car came somewhere in the scope of this footprint, in and around the government building, and then circled around and went and committed some crime in the area, we might catch him on one camera and then pick him up in another.
That's correct, you'll absolutely be able to identify every vehicle, there won't be any question that this is a two thousand and nine Pontiac G six. Like silver in color or whatever, you'll be able to identify every vehicle, you just won't necessarily read every license plate.
I wonder, how big is the storage, how long's the storage cap run?
You're gonna have approximately thirty days of archived video.
And it just, and it just repeats on itself?
It does, and it's all on a hard drive, it's all, uh, redundant backup and everything, so you don't have to worry about losing video.
That's, that's kept in central, central repository here?
It's gonna be kept in your closet over here on the first floor, yes. And, uh, as John had already indicated, my, uh, decision was that we should hardwire all the way out to your parking lot. That way there's no chance of losing the video, it'll always be there. Uh, we're isolating the, uh, cables on both ends, so that if you should ever get struck by lightning, it'll limit the amount of damage that that lightning can do. I've also provided options for warranties and or service agreements up to five years. The service agreements, should you choose to go with them, short of vandalism or act of God, anything that happens to your system is on me. Uh, we have advanced replacement on any of this stuff, if it should break, I'll get something from the manufacturer immediately, bring it out here, replace it. And send back the old part, if it can be repaired, then fine, and if not.
Is the service agreement the two thousand six hundred seventy-eight per year?
That's correct. Along with, uh, Mr. Womack, uh, is in the parking, parking area, is there another location that may be suitable to put a camera that will, uh, pick up? Get your person or a car that we can identify? We, uh, we have cameras at the entrance over on this side of the building, we have cameras watching the parking lot on the far end of the building. We also have pa- uh, cameras in the back alley. Basically, your entire building will be surrounded, if somebody walks onto your property, you're going to see them. Now, how close they get to the camera will depend upon what kind of identification grade video you have. The people that enter your building, the, the people that enter your building will be walking right into a camera. So everybody who walks into your building, you're going to get really hot quality video of those individuals.
And it, this system is expandable?
This, this system, it will be infinitely expandable, you will never outgrow it. One of the things I like about this manufacturer is software service agreements, there are none, I'll never come back to you and say, you've gotta upgrade to the next level of software up. And oh, by the way, that's a thousand dollars a camera, some nonsense like that, that'll never happen. This company will continue to give you any updates to their software as they make them. The company that manufactures this system is nationally renowned for this product. They have all kinds of other innovative products as well, that throughout time I'll be able to talk with them about.
Good.
But yes, you'll be able to expand this to anywhere in the county that you ever wanna go. If you wanna make it all a single system, I can do that, if you wanna make it all individual systems, you can do that as well.
Kyle tells us in his letter that, that you're out of West Palm Beach, Florida?
Security 101 is a national franchise organization, we have over forty franchises across the country right now, we've been in business since two thousand and eight. Uh, I own the franchise in Raleigh, North Carolina, I've been in this business.
You're out of Raleigh, okay.
I've been in this business for twenty-five years, I've been located here in Raleigh for twelve.
Okay.
And what's your name again?
Al, Affenito.
Affenito?
Affenito.
Well, I just wanna say thanks for coming tonight, I really appreciate your time.
I was gonna say, I can keep all the way from West Palm Beach, I was about to.
Oh yeah.
But, but that was one thing, I, I will share with you, just on a personal note, Mr. Edwards, I mean, I think all of us Hollywood's met Kyle and, and, um, his expertise. And, um, the, the letter that he shared with us about your company, your customer service and, and your willingness to work with us, I do appreciate that very much.
It's my pleasure, and it's the kind of, um, you can expect that from me as you go forward throughout this entire process and whatever else we do in the future. I believe what I'm doing and I will stand behind everything we do.
Oh.
Thank you so much.
No, you still need to approve the, the purchase and the, maybe, and the ongoing service agreement.
Just, just a question, a general services facility downtown, are we planning on, or does that have some sort of surveillance?
They do have surveillance, um, but it is one that we would like, um, Al to take a look at, because we have a problem with identifying people. So it's obviously not of this caliber, so we will be talking to him after we get this, this installed here. We've talked a little bit about the summit building, but we haven't, uh, we haven't moved on that one, no sir.
So what we approved was the budget earlier?
Yeah. You just did the budget amendment, you still have to approve the contract and the, and the ongoing service agreement.
The contract.
Service.
Service, warranty is a bad word.
Okay. Understood.
People understand warranty.
Okay, so any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thanks Al.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, review the lease agreement for USDA office.
Yes sir, Mr. Chairman, when I received this, uh, notification from the USDA, I thought we had a, well, I thought we'd already approved this thing, but after going back through, um, and looking at what we approved on February twentieth, two thousand twelve. We'd only approved, um, addendum, we had not actually approved a new agreement. So this is a new agreement that would run from March first, two thousand thirteen to December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Um, they have been paying us all along, um, even though essentially the lease agreement was up. So, uh, there's, you know, it's at the same amount, there's nothing really anything different here, and we, I'm sure Ms. Conlon would be thankful that, uh, they would pay the rent there and help out with the expenses there.
Just catching up on paperwork essentially.
That's what this was doing, I, you know, I, I'll be honest with you, I thought, I'll be honest with you, I thought we had already done it, matter of fact, I said something to Carrie about it, I said, I thought we just did this. But, uh, anyway, we hadn't done the extension, we just did it on the addendum, so.
When I noticed that Chairman Shook, former Chairman Shook's name was on here, I said, don't they get on the internet, check? But then again, it's the federal government.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, any further questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, um, change order for Clyde Ryan Road Institute, Mr. Crump.
Uh, yes sir, Mr. Chairman, we are closing out this grant agreement with the EDA, and going back through all the, um, documentation, there was a change order that should have been approved for forty-two thousand, eighty-one dollars and seventy-three cents. This was, these were changes that the DOT required before they would accept the road. If you remember, we did this project in two phases, the first phase was out by challenge printing, um, and the telecommunications building. Um, when, uh, the DOT got out there as part of Phase Two, there were some issues there, they had to go back and, and cut some sections out and repu- and put that back in. And there were also some areas that were, um, the shoulder areas, uh, you know, where we had, uh, grass growing and that kind of stuff that had to be re- redone to meet DOT's specification. So this is just, uh, paperwork, um, that balances the, the grant, so that we can file the, the final great grant paperwork to EDA. And it is their money we're spending here, so this is not, uh, county funds, we're spending their funds and just validating that, yes, we've spent their funds.
Okay.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, um, John, do you have anything to report?
Well, I see Ms. Conlon out there, and so I'd be remiss if I didn't remind everybody that the Farm City banquet is on the twenty-fourth, the twenty-fourth. And, uh, hopefully everybody has that on their calendar, it is the week of Thanksgiving as usual, and it's always a great meal and a great program, and hopefully everybody can be there, I'm looking forward to it.
Got my ticket.
So, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let's start with, uh, Commissioner Reeves.
Please come out and vote, don't miss this opportunity to do the right thing, not just for yourself but for others, please come out and vote, look for my name too.
Twice.
Sure.
Okay. I, I echo that same sentiment, it is a civic responsibility, I think we all should, uh, hold dear. Um, voting is a, uh, very important part of our, um, our culture and our heritage in this country, we should cherish it. I try to instill that same in my family, that same sentiment, and I hope that all of us will exercise that right. Uh, the second thing is, uh, there was an article in the paper here recently about it, and I, I just wanna make sure that, for the record, I addressed it as well. Uh, Family Promise of Lee County, which provides an absolutely, uh, important imperative service for the county, uh, and for the city of Sanford. Uh, and, and helping to, uh, remedy in part the homeless situation in the county, I just want people to understand that this is, this is something that's near and dear to my heart, and I know it is to a lot of us here. Uh, they do provide an invaluable service, the organization does, I, I sit on their board, and, and, uh, I've been with the organization since its inception. And I, I do believe, and I cherish the organization and its leadership, and I do believe that it's an imperative organization. You know, I, 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 I was quoted in the paper as saying that I didn't believe that it, that it provided a constitutionally mandated service that the county has to pay for. And I, and I, and I, those on the board understand where I'm coming from on that, I don't, I know we don't all agree about that. Um, that, that taxpayers should perhaps share in the burden for paying for that, but, you know, I respect those other opinions as well. And perhaps maybe in the future, this Board of Commissioners may share in that burden, or share in, in, in expensing it in part through taxpayer dollars. Um, I do think though, that the community needs to step up, uh, in a greater, in a greater sense of, of, uh, civic involvement. Uh, and I'm hoping, and I'm gonna challenge, I'm gonna lay this challenge down for the churches of the community, I know there's about thirteen or fourteen churches that today are very, are doing yeoman's work and, and supporting these families and housing them now. And I'm hoping more churches will step up, uh, to help provide some of the financial support that this, this organization needs. The Interfaith Hospitality Network has about, uh, three or four hundred of these, uh, Family Promise-like organizations around the country. There are quite a few in the state of North Carolina, and they, and they rely mostly on donations and volunteer, on volunteers to, to keep these organizations alive. They don't rely on, on government, uh, uh, charity, uh, and government handouts, they, they rely on grants, bestowing organizations donations in churches. And, and that's how these organizations came alive, and that's how they survived all these many years. So I'm hoping that the community will step up and help, uh, help create a balance in this organization's balance sheet and, and, and make it survive. Uh, you know, I'm gonna do my part to try to help them with fundraising and, and, and to, uh, you know, get more cash into the cash flow. I, I think it's imperative that we do this, I mean, especially this time of year, as we get into the cold season, this is when families really do need to get out of cars and tents and, and have a, you know, have a warm place to go to. And I, and just as a reminder, there are two other shelters in the community that Outreach Mission provides, one for men and one for women and women with children. It's called Outreach Mission, but this is the one network that provides, uh, shelter for families. And, and that's, and we don't have a lot of space, and there's always a waiting list and, and people needing to get into these shelters, so. You know, if you, if you, if you attend a church, and I hope most of, all of you do, uh, please speak to your Board of Deacons or your, or your pastors about, uh, maybe providing some moderate amount of, uh, financial support to Family Promise, we, we do need that help, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I agree with Commissioner Reeves, Commissioner Womack, thank you.
Okay.
I had a quick question for Kurt, did, did you find out anymore with the brightening that you had after the mental storm?
They had to postpone it.
Okay, okay.
Uh, although I did have a sit-down for about two hours, um, if you would like, I can paraphrase some of the comments made. The article that stimulated the questions was not complete, that being the newspaper, they, they leave out a lot of key facts. One of them being that the, uh, the consulting firm Fayetteville in Cumberland County, I, I don't recall exactly which one hired. But, uh, they were telling the government that they could dip into the money, but the OEA funds are strictly for five oh one C three groups, so. So that was left out of the story, so that causes all that. Yes, they spent the money.
I wasn't about to memory. Who did you talk with to get that name?
Greg Taylor and John Harbison, where we spoke on that. But I will give a more detailed report once we finalize our board meeting.
As far as my comments, yes, please go out and vote tomorrow. And if you voted already, thank you, regardless of who you voted for. Exercise your right. That's great. And we won't meet again for a couple of weeks. So I'd like to wish all of our veterans, especially those up here, Happy Veterans Day. And, and remember that because of their service, we're able to go out and vote tomorrow. So, that's it.
No, those two, the good ones, yep. Veterans Day and give a prayer for all those serving now and that have served and gave their ultimate sacrifice upon the altar of freedom. And go up, thank you.
I echo all of those things, and I joined the meeting.
I'm sorry, you're out of.
Let you learn.
I was gonna say Broadway probably has an appetite, but I believe it's November the eleventh, they have the Broadway Veterans Celebration there. If you haven't been there, it's really a moving celebration. There's people there. So you can hear speeches, there's wreath legs, and it's, it's becoming bigger every year since I've started going and I've seen these grow. And they're still trying to get private funds to expand some restrooms out there. People come from all over the state. Yeah, quite a few. There's several things going on with the Triangle J Board that could impact our county or at least one. And so we'll have a report for that at, at the next meeting. Should, should have a report for that.
Do you wanna, you were gonna say anything about the, the partnership board?
Yeah, our next meeting, we need for continuity, select two people to be on the partnership board. And then once the new board comes in, they can select the commissioner that they want on the board. So that will take place in their next meeting. It'll be a three-year appointment. So anybody that's interested in doing that, it's been published, I believe, getting it. So. I think that's all I have.
One, one other thing, I, I think the board should certainly thank Michael Crumpton and Miss Council. Who the other man?
Michael James?
No, at Horton Park, that was just my son, Michael. That was just Michael Crumpton. Let's go.
Michael did that job.
Well, he had, he had a bunch of people with him. That's. That's one of the dugouts.
I want to, I want to say, I want to also ditto that because I rode by there and stopped and went out and, and looked at it, and it's a, it's a good job, a very good job. And I, I didn't think about bringing that up, but it's an excellent job, and they got another project that they're gonna work on soon.
That's a great picture.
We're trying to get, and we're trying to get another Eagle candidate to take over the, the building that Mr. Frazier would like to have painted. And working with Mr. Payne and, and Russell on some of the woodwork and that kinda stuff. We're already talking about it.
I'm gonna volunteer myself whenever they prepare to do that. And so when, when Michael and the team gets together, I will certainly volunteer my time and effort to help them with that project.
Even maybe some of the carpentry students at the high school, you know, they might be able to come out and volunteer some on the weekend if they practice.
Sometimes when you get a chance, you can talk to John and ask him about all the problems ahead. Getting they started out there. I think you were sort of.
I will tell you that, I will tell you that whoever laid the concrete out at Horton Park did a fine job because that concrete's not going anywhere. We could not drill through it to put the anchors down. It was, we, even with a hammer drill, it was really difficult. But it took us about four hours just, just to, to get the bases down into the concrete. And it was, anyway, it kinda set us back a little bit, but anyway, it's, thanks to.
Report that concrete, cause man, that's kind of.
That was a long time ago. That's what Mr. Payne told us, and I see Russell back there. He knows, and he knows, he knew we were, but.
Does this complete everything for him?
He, he has finished his project, and I actually talked to John Payne about it tonight. We'll go out there tomorrow night and actually have a little song where he'll take a couple of pictures with John, and then Michael can finish his write-up and hopefully appear before an Eagle board here within a month or so.
Wonderful.
I would move that the board issue a resolution or a letter of thanks for the work it's done, maybe by next meeting.
Okay, I guess since you made a motion, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll leave you hanging there.